Aloha Kako, welcome and good evening everyone. My name is James Eustace and I'm the president of the Wyman Community Association. Thank you to those joining us online tonight for our regular monthly Wyman Community Association Town Meeting. I encourage you to follow, like and subscribe to the Wyman Community Association on Facebook, Instagram and YouTube. You may also find relevant information and resources up on our website at wymanetown.org. We do strive to keep our accounts active and up to date. At this point, I would like to recognize the WCA Board members, our Vice President Michael Donnelly, our Treasurer Jeremy Madrid, our Secretary Nancy Carr Smith, and our Directors Patty Cook, David Greenwell, Mary Beth Lecheck, Lonnie Olson Chong and Riley Smith. On behalf of the Wyman Community Association Board, we are grateful for the support shown by you, the community to hold these virtual town meetings. Thank you all for your interest in joining us for our past evenings and our past meetings, and for viewing and sharing these recordings. You're welcome to revisit and watch these videos at your leisure up on the WCA Facebook page or up on the WCA YouTube channel. The Wyman Community Association is a nonprofit organization that strives to promote open participation by all of the Wyman community, develop leadership and support the smart growth of the region. If you'd like to support the work that we have done and help continue our effort in connecting with our community, you're more than welcome to donate and join as a member. If this is something that interests you and you would like to receive more information, please email us at wymanecommunityassociation@gmail.com or visit our website at wymanetown.org. On our website, you will find an option to contribute and join digitally, or you're welcome to mail us your membership form that you may find up on our website if you prefer. Your contributions and membership allow us to reach out and connect with the community in this setting and support the work, the work that the WCA has done over the past 60 years. Mahalo Nui. So as mentioned, and for our agenda this evening, we'll be hearing important, some important news and updates for our community. We will begin this evening by sharing a few community announcements and hearing from our community police officers. After connecting with our Wyman County Council members and discussing the ongoing impacts of COVID-19, we will learn more about the impacts of the recent wildfires across the district, especially the devastating Range Fire at the beginning of August. Following this, we will spotlight our September nonprofit of the month. And for the last portion of tonight's agenda, we'll have an opportunity to introduce and meet with the new Pohakua Training Area Garrison Commander. This evening, we are grateful to present you with a full and informative agenda. And after we hear from these community leaders and officials, we have allocated some time to share your questions with our presenters. We do appreciate community members sending in their questions at a time, and we will also try and capture some of your live questions for this portion. Please be sure to use the Facebook chat to pose your live questions, and we will do our best given the time to share them with our guests. And thank you to our WCA Board members Riley Smith and Mary Beth Lecheck for joining this evening and presenting these questions. Mahalo. So at this time, we were going to kick things off. And welcome in and welcome back our community police officers and Captain Evangelista. So I'd like to welcome in Captain Evangelista and our community officers Justin Cabantin and Chandler Nacino. Welcome officers, thank you.
Thanks everyone, good evening everybody.
Hi, good afternoon. Okay, so I'll start it off. Hi, I'm Officer Cabantin. I'm the community policing officer for South Koala. For those of you that I haven't met yet, but before I begin with the traffic statistics for the month, I just had a few announcements. The fishing that I was planning, the KK Fishing Derby that I was planning was canceled until we get more favorable conditions return, you know, with the whole COVID and everything like that. So that's canceled at the end of the month. Our next Coffee with a Cop is going to be September 21st. It's a Tuesday. That's going to be virtual. I'll send that flyer out to the, to the group and to James so he can distribute it. That's going to be on Zoom. Be on the lookout for our next South Koala Community Newsletter. That's going to be coming out shortly. It's just getting finalized. And as far as the, I know, I know James brought it up as the evacuation routes and the signage for Hulu that is being worked on. I've been in contact with Councilman Richards about that. We've been emailing each other about that. So I just wanted to get those announcements out of the way before I move into the statistics for, traffic statistics for South Koala. Today's September 2nd, so I want to apologize. I don't have all the citation numbers solidified yet. We still have officers bringing in citations, so I'm going to give you the numbers that I do know. So in the month of August, 730 citations were issued in the District of South Koala. That is already higher than the number in July, which only 695 was issued in July. Our speeding is, our speeding this month was definitely higher. In July, 150 was issued and our regulatory expired safety checks or registrations are definitely higher in August as well. And our devices as of today is higher than it was in July with 76 cellphone citations issued last month. For as far as patrol activity, there was 17 grant-funded projects done last month compared to only 14 in July. So our patrol officers are out there being proactive, you know, and doing speeding projects, you know, on Highway 190 and Highway 200. They did five distracted driving projects for what I said, uh, they did seat belts and so 17 altogether. In July, they only did 14. So they're definitely out there being proactive. As far as major traffic collisions, unfortunately, there was 12 for last month in, in August. In July, we had 11. So we're up just one more on that one for the month of August. Of course, I'm glad to report there's no fatalities. And actually, the frequency of major traffic collisions was not on the weekends. It was majority during the weekday. So it could be just people going to work, coming home from work. There's no specific time periods that was more frequently happening. There was no intoxicated or DUI-related collisions. And three of them were involved, actually one with wild animals on Daniel K. Noe. And as far as the reckless driving complaints, I actually went through them. I counted about 48 reckless driving complaints on our roadways in our district. A lot of them, they're just spread out. There's really no distinct area where they're generated from, but our patrolmen do go out and make checks for the vehicles, whatever description that they get. And then as far as the totals again, what I do know is that the totals are definitely higher than last month. And I think our officers out there, I know we were able to get two DUIs. So we were able to take two drivers off the road. They were under the influence of an intoxicant. But I'm going to now, if there's any questions about the traffic, I'm going to turn it over to my partner Officer Nacino, and he has the crime trends.
Good evening. Just like Officer Cabantin did, I'm Officer Chandler Nacino, also stationed in the South Koala District. For those of you guys who don't know me, I'm going to be going over the crime statistics. So some of the stuff you might have noticed, we have been working hard to clean up the parks. So we seem to have got it fairly under control as far as, you know, on the mess and unsightly activity that's been going on there lately. So we're happy to announce that. As far as the crime statistics go, for the month of August, we had one reported assault case. As far as the drug cases go, we had six reported drug cases. The majority of these drug cases were initiated off of contacts normally stemming from traffic stops. So a lot of these contacts are initiated by traffic stops. As far as burglaries go, we had four reported burglaries. That doesn't always necessarily mean that the house is broken into when nobody was there is anytime there's a crime committed within a residence. So took over a couple of the burglaries. They occurred in residents that were vacant. Either the owners were off island or they were leaving the house vacant. So some of the advice we can give from learning the how they were broken into would be to secure the residence better if you are planning to leave for an extended amount of time, which would include, you know, maybe something as old school as putting like a broom handle or a piece of wood behind the window so it can't get slid open all the way. As far as the theft cases go, we did have a increase in theft cases. There was, I believe, one more than the last month. A lot of them were petty theft to include a lot of shoplifting. As far as criminal property damage cases go, we did see an increase as well. So we did see a small increase in cases that involved like vandalism at the public parks or to random cars that were parked. And there seems to be no MO to how they were and why they were committed. So I just, just reminder to be vigilant and maybe, you know, making sure to leave your cars in areas that are easily viewed by other people who are around so that those kind of incidences don't happen. I saw I got my time there, so I'm going to turn it over to the captain.
Thanks you guys. I'll just take a real quick minute for everybody to speak about the one assault that we experienced last month. By the way, one assault for a district of this size is amazing. Typically, a district of this size, we should be looking at five to, five to 10 assaults per month, but just the one last month, which is really great. It did unfortunately, however, involve a police officer being assaulted by someone. We responded to a complaint that somebody was not practicing social distancing and wearing their mask as required. When we contacted the individual, they were uncooperative and ended up assaulting our officer. Thankfully, our officer was not seriously injured, although he did have to miss some work and get checked out by the doctors. But it just so happens this individual, we found out later, was also COVID positive. And so the reason I highlight this is just to highlight the risk that our, our community, our patrol officers in our community are facing every day, particularly with, with COVID. So not only do we have to be concerned with people not complying with our directions and the laws, but assaulting us when we do try to enforce compliance and possibly exposing us to this disease. So we do our best and we always appreciate, appreciate voluntary compliance and that, that's what we strive for. And so that's what we hope that the community backs us up with and mahalo for you guys' time.
Thank you Captain Evangelista and thank you CPOs Cabantin and Nacino. We appreciate all the work that you do to support our communities. Mahalo Nui. And with the, you're welcome. Thank you so much for being here this evening. With the recent Hawaii County rules for gatherings and all the changes there due to our, you know, our high positivity rate in our community, you know, hovering at over 9% and not to mention another high day of case counts, we would like to welcome in for this next portion, Queens North White Community Hospital Emergency Room Physician, who also works in the intensive care units, Dr. Crystal Hammer, to share with us a brief COVID-19 update and really to provide us some guidance going forward. Mahalo Dr. Hammer. Thank you for taking some time to join us this evening.
Thank you for having me. So with the increased case and increased positivity, we've also seen significant increases in hospitalizations and sick patients who are presenting to the ER and requiring hospitalization ICU stay and having severe symptoms even requiring intubation and deaths. Myself, as well as the other physicians who practice here, and this is not limited to Wyman, but includes Hualoa Medical Center, Kona and Oahu. We are concerned that with the projections of increased cases, we've already hit points where we've stretched our resources then in terms of bed capacity, ICU capacity and even oxygen availability for the state. We're very concerned that moving forward into September, that we may exceed the bed space we have available at our hospital and at the other hospitals on the Big Island. Right now, we are okay. We have received additional resources with the help of female nurses that are helping staff. So we can, we've converted multiple rooms that were previously offices into new patient space and we're doing everything we can to maximize our ability to care for the patients here. We have additional masks and devices that we can use to provide oxygen to people because we have in the last week alone, we've at times reached our capacity in terms of using every single resource we've had. That number has come back down thankfully. Our oxygen supply right now, we're predicting that we have maybe one to two weeks of oxygen left. We're using anywhere between 200 and 250 times what our baseline oxygen use was before COVID. And we have an oxygen stewardship recommendation plan in place, which we've already initiated here and it's statewide. And that already is helping. So we've had improvements in our oxygen use and finding smarter strategies to use it so that we can have better stewardship of the oxygen that we have remaining. And then hopeful that we will have increased production here and maybe get additional resources from mainland. Because of our need for oxygen stewardship, unfortunately, all of our elective surgeries have been canceled. And this is in the state. If it's urgent or emergent, we will proceed with, with the care that's needed for people. But if it can be delayed until we have enough resources, just in terms of oxygen even, that's something that we have to do right now unfortunately. That said, we are very excited that at least one of the vaccinations, the Pfizer vaccine is now FDA approved. So I've spoken with a lot of patients who are worried because it was still under the emergency use authorization and they wanted something that had kind of been fully vetted and approved and had a good safety profile. In the US, we've given 371 million vaccinations. Here in Hawaii itself as a state, we have 1.8 million doses that we've administered. And I can tell you that when we were looking at our census, the patients who are admitted to the hospital, the patients who were seen in the ICU, the patients who are intubated, the patients who die, almost all of them are unvaccinated. And that's true for our state. The other concern that we have is even though we have that capacity now, I know Oahu is also overrun in terms of their, their capacity and trying to provide care to very high numbers of COVID patients. I think they have 75 ICU patients there as of today. And the problem with that is that there are a lot of services that we cannot provide here. So I think we do a pretty good job with the resources we have, but sometimes people require a level of care or specialty service that we just don't have. And so we, we rely on having bed space in Oahu so that we can transfer these patients for things. If they need emergent neurosurgery, if they need, if they were having a heart attack, if they needed an intervention that we just don't have here. And the concern that we have is that with decreasing bed space and availability, some of these patients may not get those resources. So all of you who are out there, if you have not been vaccinated, I highly encourage you to consider that. We do have a booster vaccine that'll be available at North Hawaii starting September 20th. We have our vaccine clinic that's available Wednesday and Friday. We have other interventions available for patients who are positive for COVID. So one is a monoclonal antibody infusion. This is for patients who are positive for COVID but have mild symptoms and they don't require oxygen yet, but they have high risk features. So this would be an infusion that can decrease their risk of needing hospitalization and death. And decreasing hospitalization is important given our, our limited resources here. That's available Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Patients can self-refer or their primary care physician can send them in and we can do 12 patients a day on those days. We also have antiviral therapy that we're administering to people who are sick and hospitalized, steroids, dexamethasone and another monoclonal antibody infusion for those who are requiring oxygen and having, it's not just oxygen, they have to actually be severely ill. Unfortunately, there's not many treatments that we have that are particularly effective for this disease. The, the best treatment we have is the vaccination. That has been the most effective thing that we have to decrease hospitalization and death and severity of illness. And you can see that just walking through the hospital because all of the patients that are requiring those services are unvaccinated unfortunately. And I think that I'm out of time.
Thank you Dr. Hammer. And we do actually have a couple of questions for you, so I'd like to pass it over to Riley and Mary Beth to share these with you.
Mary Beth, if you want to go ahead, go ahead.
So thank you so much, Dr. Hammer. You and everybody working so hard to keep us safe. Are fully vaccinated individuals able to spread COVID, especially now with the Delta virus, Delta variant surging?
Yes, they are. So unvaccinated patients obviously can spread COVID. Vaccinated patients can spread COVID. We have data that shows that vaccinated COVID patients clear their disease sooner. So they're probably, they may spread it, but they will spread it not as long theoretically. And then obviously vaccination doesn't prevent illness, but the severity is significantly more mild and their risk of dying or requiring hospitalization or other severe side effects is lowered, but they can still spread the disease.
All right, I'll have a follow-up question. So Dr. Hammer, thank you for joining us. This is the question, what are the quarantine rules and guidance for those vaccinated and those unvaccinated? What is the policy for informing individuals they should quarantine until they receive negative test results?
So if somebody has a known COVID exposure, they were in contact, close contact, you know, greater than six feet or more than 15 minutes or not wearing it with some mask or not wearing a mask. And they're vaccinated. Right now, the recommendation is if they have no symptoms, right? So this is asymptomatic people. Right now, the recommendations are not for quarantine if you've been vaccinated, but we do recommend testing. If you're unvaccinated, we recommend quarantine just because you're much higher risk of contracting the disease and then potentially spreading it. So quarantine is recommended until the test result comes back.
To clarify in the quarantine, so if you take a test and it takes two days or three days to get your results, that's the quarantine period. Thank you very much.
You do not have to quarantine. And keep in mind, if you're exposed to somebody and you test the next day, your test result is really not reflective of your exposure. It's going to take three, maybe five days for you to actually catch the disease and then become symptomatic and potentially have viral shedding where we can test it and you can be positive. So if your test is too early, it could be a false negative.
Okay, thank you very much.
One last question, Dr. Hammer. Can a community member stop by the hospital to pick up a vaccinated button if they did not receive one previously?
So if you mean like a button you can pin on your shirt, I don't know about that because I haven't seen those, but the vaccine card is what I think you're probably referring to. That you can. And you can contact them even if it's been after the fact and ask them what lot number was it and they have the dates. It's, it's all registered because it's been entered into the vaccine safety database. And so you can receive that information.
Thank you, Dr. Hammer. I really appreciate your time here and of course, all the work you're doing in our community to support us and the hours that you're putting in. Thank you so much for all that you do. Mahalo. And of course, you know, to reiterate some of this, some of the importance of what Dr. Hammer is here talking about, you know, please continue to do your part to prevent the spread of COVID-19, right? Where, so we're wearing masks, we're practicing good physical distancing, we're avoiding large gatherings. We are seeing a very concerning spike here of positive cases at this time. And really, this is our kulianna. So please consider being vaccinated. Please continue to do your part for the health and safety of our community and for our loved ones. If you have any other further questions, I encourage you to visit wycovid19.com, which is the state COVID-19 portal, or there's the county portal at wycounty.gov/coronavirus for more information there. So once again, thank you to Dr. Hammer for joining us. Mahalo Nui. Next up, I would like to welcome in one of our, actually both of our council members and we'll begin with the Councilor Heather Kimball, really to share some updates from the county and the council itself with any news or updates. So thank you councilors and Councilor Kimball, the floor is yours.
Thank you, James, and thank you as always to the Wyman Community Association for the invite tonight. James, can I share my screen?
Please.
All right. Thank you. So I just wanted to start by saying that we have new office staff in District 1. Our original Council aide, the Paka O'Connor, has gone off to grad school. We're very happy for him. But we have replaced him with Beverly Tease and she is our new council aide. So feel free to reach out to her if you have any questions for my office. I wanted to, whoops. Five. I wanted to discuss a couple of items that we shared in our newsletter. And if you haven't gotten signed up for our newsletter yet, please do so. The URL is there, bit.ly/hcc_d1-news and you can sign up and we send out a weekly email with information to the district. This most current email, we covered a vertical farming seminar that we posted on our YouTube channel. It's still available there. So if you're interested in vertical farming, which is an alternative mechanized way to get more product out of a smaller land area, it of course may have some drawbacks. And you want to learn more, please feel free to watch that on our YouTube channel. I also wanted to share an opportunity to participate in the broadband rural mapping project. So one of the key things to expanding broadband access is to find out where we don't have it. And this program through the Awamukuliana Collaborative is a mapping program. They're hiring folks for $150 a day for up to 12 days to map their area if and map internet speeds in their area. So you can contribute to our understanding of what kind of coverage we have with broadband and where we need to expand our infrastructure. And then finally, I wanted to share Helco's mapping program, which is to identify where we need to put more electric vehicle chargers. So if you go to charge@hawaii.com, you can interact with their mapping program and locate places where we need to have more EV infrastructure. I also wanted to share that, that our area over here in Hamakua has been helping out with relocating some of the cattle that were displaced with the fire over in the west side. And here's a picture that I love of some of those cattle arriving at the former O'Kala Dairy site. And so about 100, about 500 heads of cattle have been moved over to the dairy site. They're going to be kept out in the pasture. And it's a win-win for everybody. The cattle are in a safe, secure location. And they're going to be grazing an area that is, as you can see, pretty overgrown because there hasn't been any cattle on it for some time. And we had that fire recently in Pawilo. So I have been concerned about that fuel load that we have up there. The new owners of the operating assets for the O'Kala Dairy, the Bucks, have been great to work with. This was a wonderful partnership with Parker Ranch, the Bucks and the O'Kala community to help provide for these animals in this time of need. I just wanted to make sure everyone was also aware that YPO Valley will be closed for the Labor Day weekend for non-resident access. So if you had plans to go there, I'm sorry, you're going to have to make plans to go somewhere else, but we do have great concern about people gathering down there in the health, food and safety of the community. So we ask you to visit other areas if you're going to be out and about over Labor Day weekend. Finally, I just wanted to mention that I was selected as one of 20 council members and mayors across the country to participate in Smart Growth, America's Champion Institute. I will be learning all about smart growth and complete streets and how to build healthy, active communities. Um, I will be learning all about smart growth and complete streets and how to build healthy, active communities. I'm very excited and honored to have been selected to participate in this program. And I will just close by saying thank you, um, particularly to all of our medical professionals right now. I have several friends that work both at HMC and North Hawaii Community Center. I know you guys have been working very long hours and very hard. I just want to thank you for all that you do and remind everyone to mask up, social distance. Um, this Labor Day weekend, of course, Labor Day is a time that we often find ourselves, uh, coming together and, um, it, it's just different times and everybody needs to say, stay safe. So remember to wear your masks, get vaccinated, and, um, just take, keep taking care of each other. Uh, again, thank you, James, for the invitation to be here tonight and, uh, as always, if there are any questions, feel free to call my office or email anytime. Mahalo.
Thank you, councillor Kimball, and congratulations on the appointment there.
Thank you.
Uh, and next up, I'd like to welcome in councillor Richards. Let's spend a little time with him here. Welcome councillor.
Aloha, James. And again, thanks so much for the Hawaii Community Association for the invitation. Uh, catching up, thanks Heather for running through a bunch of that. Uh, I know we are having, uh, battalion chief Bergen coming on to talk about the fire, so I won't spend a whole lot of time on that. Just from the, our, our perspective, not the firefighting perspective, but the recovery perspective. The different groups have been working very diligently as far as identifying damage, uh, both quantifying it as to actual physical damage now and then projected damage because of loss of range going forward. As Heather pointed out, five hundred head have been moved to O'Kala. Um, those are not the only cattle that have been moved so far. Others have been moved and it's my understanding, we still have to move probably somewhere five hundred to a thousand head to get through the, the worst of this. As far as the total loss and damage to the area because of the fire, again, assessments are still being put together. But I think it's, it's safe to say that we're well in excess of ten million dollars for damages. And that doesn't include the cost of firefighting. Uh, Chief Bergen can touch on that. Shifting over a little bit, uh, to the COVID, Dr. Hammer, if you're still on the line, I want to thank you for what you just said. That was probably one of the most clear and concise descriptions I have heard about what we need to do with COVID and where we are and the concerns coming forward. On Tuesday night, I was on a community meeting, Zoom call or a webinar with the mayor in Kohala to discuss what we are doing with COVID. And Kohala has worked very diligently as far as getting their arms around the COVID infections, the testing, the vaccinations. And as it pertains to the schools, the three principals of the elementary, middle and high school are working together. And there's a cohesive es- effort between them and the healthcare providers in Kohala. As far as going forward with having a comprehensive look of how we're going to take care of our community. If we have a sick child, then what? How do we test? How do we go forward? What are the, uh, the parameters for getting that child back in school? Because just we have a s- a flu or cold symptom, doesn't necessarily mean we have a problem. So how do we put this back together? And Kohala came up with some great protocols and how they are working, but there's still some questions unanswered. Part of it is testing and how do we go forward with testing? I know my office has received a bunch of calls about testing children twelve and under. And it's my understanding, I think there's a little bit of a stigma for testing young children. And speaking to pediatricians, there shouldn't be any concern in doing this going forward. But I know these are the details that are needed to be worked out. Uh, I know there's a great concern and again, Dr. Hammer, thanks for highlighting that. It's not just our hospital, but if we are overrun in RCU beds, how are we going to manage this for the other needs? Traffic accidents, heart attacks, the things that are going to go on in our community all the time. And this is where the concern is coming up. I cannot reiterate and reemphasize enough, social distancing, mask up, hygiene, and please get vaccinated. Statistically, over ninety-nine percent of the people that we are losing today to COVID are non-vaccinants. And ninety percent of the people in the hospital in our state today are non-vaccinants when they're in for COVID. So cannot emphasize enough the importance of this. We can do this if we get it together. Now shifting gears from human health, let's go to animal health. Uh, I want to talk about the animal control that the, our county is embarking on. As everyone knows here, uh, we have the humane, the Hawaii Island Humane Society for the last thirty-plus years that did our animal control and our animal rescue with our, w- within our county. Last year, they chose not to, to, uh, put forth a bid for the contract and we had a new provider, the Rainbow Rangers. The county worked very diligently to help the Rainbow Rangers come up to speed and they just never could quite get to that point. At this point now, the county has taken that animal control back and is doing the animal control and partnering up with the, uh, the, uh, animal rescue groups to then transfer the animals from control to those groups. The details aren't working out yet, but we have a working group that we're working together, seeking outside help and heading in a, what I'd consider a very good direction. We'll have animal control where the, the county will hold the animals for a period of time and then transfer to the animal rescue groups. The intent is to have facilities north, south, east and west Kauai County. And we are getting there. Uh, it's an ongoing project, so stay tuned as we get that. We can always talk more, but James, I saw the one minute flash, so I think we're done there. And again, I'll be staying on if there's any questions. Aloha, everyone.
Mahalo councillor Richards and councillor Kimball. I think we had maybe a question or two from, uh, Riley, Mary Beth, if that's okay?
Sure, I can go, I, I can go ahead and start. Hey Tim, thanks for being on. A quick question, what's the status or what do you know the status of the Hulu Street emergency route signage?
That one is on for the group, the Hulu Street. This is in Waikoloa and it's the, the street that goes down to the emergency evacuation road on the Ma'kai's side of Waikoloa Village. Um, that is before envi- uh, not environment, but, um, civil defense. And I've seen the tentative locations of that signage. I believe the signs are either on order or about to be ordered, so very, very soon.
Sounds good. Thanks, Tim. Mary Beth?
All right. Um, this is for both or either council members. How can we increase the number of testing sites available across the island?
Let me jump in on that real quick, Heather, then you can follow up. Uh, this was a conversation, uh, part of the conversation on Tuesday night with the mayor. And that is a concern coming forth. The mayor listened very carefully to that. I think the, the, first of all, it's the awareness that is being highlighted by people asking for this. And then secondly, the community has to help get this done. It's not as simple as people think and Dr. Hammer can weigh in on this. You, we need to have, um, certified, I, I, I don't want to say certify necessarily, but trained people taking the test, so it's a valid test when we get done with it. The question came up with home tests and the home tests are okay for screening. If you have a positive test, it's not a certified test, so you can't use it for anything. If it's a negative test, again, it's not certified. And Dr. Hammer, I don't know if you wanted to comment on any of that. It gives an indication, but it, it's not certified, so we need more, um, trained people and more test sites. And that, that, that was the message communicated to the mayor. And Dr. Hammer, if you wanted to add to that?
Uh, I, I agree with everything you say. The, some of the rapid tests and home tests are just not as accurate. So it's, you can have a false positive or a false negative. Um, and you require, uh, there are better nucleic acid amplification tests that we use, um, for confirmatory testing if one of those is positive.
I think on that one is if you take a home test and it's positive, get to your doctor as quick as you can and confirm it positive or negative.
Yeah, I'll just add, also add, I, you know, funding is also a key issue, making sure that we can supply the tests. Um, and I know that at both the county and state level, money that was originally part of the cares and, um, ARPA package that were reallocated when we didn't think we needed, as many tests are, are being refocused towards testing efforts. I, I will also say that one of the things that my office has been working on is there has been some confusion from some communities that don't speak English as their first language in terms of getting tested and vaccinating, vaccinated. So we've been in discussions with civil defense about how to bring some, um, translators into the testing and, um, vaccination areas so that we make sure that, that we're properly communicating to our non-English speakers.
And one of the things that Dr. Hammer had commented on, I do know that, um, we had additional, I believe it's FEMA funding to support additional medical staff coming into our state. I believe it's five hundred and fifty people coming in over the next couple of months. Big Island was the first to receive those. And I think it was forty-eight million dollars we had to help fund that from the feds. Um, Lieutenant Governor and I had that conversation a couple of days ago.
Tim, last question. Uh, you want to comment on the Pukou emergency road and fire break? You know, anything about that?
You know, I know that is something that has been discussed historically in the past, but there has not been, um, probably anything further than just sort of a, a conversation on it. I understand and I can definitely see where it might go. And this might be not a bad time to discuss it because we're gonna have to do something about the wastewater in Pukou. And when we do that, we're probably gonna need a road there anyway. So as we do that, this may actually address two things.
Sounds good. Thanks, Tim. I think that's it. James?
Okay. Thank you so much. Um, all right. Uh, a couple of different things we're talking about there. So I'd, I'd like to shift gears a little bit and councillor Richards did talk about it with our, our recent disaster at the beginning of August here. And some of the ongoing fires, of course, that popped up and flared up, uh, since then. Um, so I'd like to shift and hear from one of our own community leaders, uh, during the recent wildfire disaster. And I'd like to welcome on, uh, Hawaii Fire Department, uh, battalion chief Bill Bergen to share with us some updates from our fire and emergency crews and the work that was carried out over this last month. And even maybe if some of the work is still being carried out in the field. So mahalo Chief Bergen for your leadership and for spending some time with us here this evening.
Well, thanks for having me. Sorry I missed the last meeting, but, uh, I had a fire to put out right about the time I was supposed to get on the Zoom meeting. Uh, anyway, I just want to say I appreciate everyone's help for this fire. You know, I had a lot of support from the community. Um, you know, brother's wife and a, a group of, uh, the Giving Tree and made a lot of meals for us. And that, that was a first or, you know, it started from the Kamalavu Estates fire. Um, you know, these, we've had quite a few, you know, some major fires recently, but the, the ones that are the hardest to, uh, the most, um, uh, you know, threatened threats is the ones with, where we have, uh, people's residences. So Kamalavu Estates, you know, unfortunately you have to, just have a fire every once in a while to get people to pay attention. Cause they, uh, get a little complacent, you know, after a big fire, they'll be on their game for about three years. And then after that, it kind of tapers off and in that kind of timeline, people, you know, property changes hands. Um, so Kamalavu Estates, there's a lot of, uh, defensible space issues on that prop, uh, behind those homes. And same thing with the Pukapu fire. You know, the fire wise is with the program, we really were promoting for years and they still try and promote it for, uh, communities like that. But people have to give us, uh, they have to help us help them basically. So they have to give us defensible space around their house. You know, don't let the tall brush and trees or weeds go right up to your house. You know, about twenty-five feet all the way around a short, you know, preferably green grass around your house. Limb up your trees, you know, four to six feet so that a fire will pass under the trees and not get up into the trees. Um, so that was a couple, you know, that's what makes it harder for us. We have these, uh, it's called a wildland urban interface fire where you have a brush fire and it gets into, uh, rural, uh, residential area. Um, the Mana brush fire. Um, I don't know what to say. It was incredible, you know? It got, well, first of all, it started on a Friday at ten thirty or so in the morning. And we were getting a handle on it. We got, you know, dozer, all of our assets there, um, on the fire. And at that time, Pukapu, uh, Hawaiian homes was the major threat. And so we put everything towards that and first dozer went there. We're getting by about one thirty or two in the morning, we had a fire break, uh, you know, protecting Pukapu. And the second set of dozers came in by West Oi concrete and came towards Pukapu. And then the other dozers went up on the flank of Monique yet to try and keep the fire from getting too far up the mountain. Um, our hope was that we, those, dozers would make it all the way to Mana Road. But because of the terrain and the gulches, they kept having to, you know, continue to chase the fire up slope. And many people have never had the opportunity to be in that area, but it's really rugged terrain. Um, thanks to the Parker Ranch Cowboys who are on quads, were able to guide the dozers to, you know, find the best route, fastest route and find all these gulch crossings at night. So anyway, by morning, we were comfortable. We had the fire somewhat contained at about fifty percent. But we knew that the winds were gonna become extremely, you know, fierce that day. And usually we make a fire break, we try and, you know, make it two blades, you know, two dozer blades wide. And when the wind kicked up, we went from about fifty percent contained to zero percent contained again. So the fire just jumped the fire breaks in every direction. So that's Saturday, um, midday. And it wasn't till like Sunday night when we started to kind of get, you know, regain control of it. But it just required a lot of dozers and amazing support from all these construction companies that were really, you know, willing to come in and help us. We had all of our volunteer firefighters, um, state forestry personnel, Waikoloa firefighters. Um, and a lot of contractors bringing in dozers and, uh, water trucks and stuff. Um, these dozers, you know, can cost up, you know, they usually cost about a thousand dollars an hour. So that, you know, helicopters cost about that much too. And, um, this fire, the beginning of our fiscal year, and I'm pretty sure we just knew our budget because I think we had over a million dollars just in dozer costs on this fire. So it definitely was a historic one. I never expected it to go as far and wide and as high on the mountain as it did, but, um, I don't know what else to say about it. It just, um, if people can create defensible space for us, that really makes our, uh, job a lot easier. And then what, we also had some assistance from the military helicopters. And I also asked for, um, paradise helicopters to come because the turnaround time from like Waiki area to a slope on Moniquea was too long. So I wanted the, the milit- military helicopters and paradise helicopters, they, they have larger buckets so they could each run. They're, they're dumping more water on the fire. So that's what we did with those helicopters and we used our colony helicopters for the, you know, stuff closer in. Um, but um, other than that, you know, I met with Parker Ranch and, you know, they want to work with us and try and put in some fire breaks and, and maintain some, maintain some fire breaks in the fire prone areas to try and prevent the fires from getting out of control in the future. And the states use that strategy, um, up by Port Hula and it's, it's worked really well. Other than that, I'm open to questions and.
Thank, thank you battalion chief Bergen. Um, I don't know if we had any questions from Riley or Mary Beth, but you know, what, what do you explain there and what you described? A lot of us can only, you know, envision what you saw there with your crews out in the field and your colleagues and how, how surreal it could have been uh, from witnessing from a distance. And, you know, we really owe, as a community, owe a lot to you and your colleagues for the work that you did out there. So I really want to share a mahalo from the community to you, your colleagues at the state level, the county level, federal agencies, the businesses, as you mentioned, that pitched in, uh, even the landowners and many of the volunteers that were out there. Really want to thank you for all the efforts to really see us through this disaster. And as a community and for those across the district, we are truly grateful, uh, for all the sacrifices that you, that you make to keep us. for all the sacrifices that you, that you make to keep us and protect us.
Thank you. Yeah. I mean, everybody, you know, sustained a loss in this, you know. Everybody had a little skin in this game, in my opinion. You know, surreal is a, I've never seen fire behavior like this, you know. We have some footage of, you know, there's fire tornadoes. I've known of like, you know, like you see one fire tornado on a brush fire that there's like dozens. And basically this fire was too big for, you know, all the agencies working together and it was, the winds were just too strong and the fuel, you know, too big. So it definitely challenged us. Hope I don't have another one in my, in my career. But there was, you know, I read a manuscript written by Evan Low that in late eighteen hundreds, I think it's eighteen ninety-seven, there was a fire that started by Kukai, Kukai. And it burned through this area. It took three, three years for them to put out. And that's what happened to a lot of sandalwood in this forested area by, okay, by the airport and stuff. So to my knowledge, that's only, that's the only fire that is bigger than this one. So I think this one is the biggest one in, you know, state history since statehood. But back in those days, they didn't have bulldozers and helicopters and stuff to, to help them. So it might have mirrored that fire if we didn't have, you know, modern technology. And thankfully, we have a lot of these, you know, off-road fire trucks that have been, you know, gifted to us through, you know, donors that, you know, support the, the Sarah Foundation. So I can't say enough about how much we appreciate, you know, having that type of equipment. If it wasn't for those trucks, we definitely would have lost them home at Kamalavu Estates.
And, and Chief Bergen, would you be able to speak, another question came in about the health and kind of well-being of your colleagues and fire crews? Could you speak to how they are after, after this experience?
Well, it definitely taxed us, you know, physically and mentally. And between this fire and, you have a lot of people that are out because of COVID. So our manpower is stretched really thin right now. So it's definitely not a good timing issue for, for any of us. So I'm not looking forward to, I've been on my forties often seeing the emails of all my personnel that are out. It'll be an interesting day tomorrow to see what kind of manpower I have. And unfortunately, people get stuck, can't go home and, you know, if we don't have the, you know, the oncoming shifts to, to relieve them. So it takes its toll on everybody. And, you know, we have one of our firefighters that actually is in really bad shape and thankfully he got flown to Queens. But we're all hoping and praying for him that he can come home and re- resume a normal life and get back to work.
Thank you. Thank you, Battalion Chief. Riley, Mary Beth, did you want to add anything here?
Okay.
Well, Battalion Chief Bergen, you know, it's, it's really a pleasure to have you on the call with us. And of course, last time, completely understandable that you weren't with us that evening. You had a job to do and you were helping to keep us and, and protect our communities here. It's great to have you on the call this evening and really hear more about and get an update and recap on those fires that we've experienced here. We, we are here as a community to support you as well. You know, you support us, we're here as a community to support you too. And we hope to do all that we can to show you that, how much you mean to us, all the work that you do for our community.
Well, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Mahalo Newey. All the best to you and your crews. And we look forward to speaking with you soon. Aloha.
Thank you. Take care.
As we, as we continue to share our stories of the impact of our recent fire, you know, for the month of September, the Waimea Community Association will be spotlighting the Girl Scouts of Hawaii as our nonprofit of the month. And really with its unique location of Camp Kilohana up on Old Saddle Road, we did, we thought it timely to learn more about the impacts to the Girl Scout camp and what we can do as a community to support them while also hearing about the activities and engagement of Girl Scouts of Hawaii during this time. So we're grateful to be joined by the CEO of Girl Scouts of Hawaii, Sherry Chang, this evening to present us some of these updates. Welcome, Sherry. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, James, and thank you to the Waimea Community Association for allowing us. And James, are you going to be presenting the slideshow right now? Okay, thank you. I wanted to talk a little bit about what Girl Scouts of Hawaii does. And then we move on to Camp Kilohana and the impact. And we can skip right to the second slide. So we have thirty-three Girl Scout troops on the island and two hundred and eighty-six girls. Two of our ASLP, our After School Leadership Program troops are actually located in Waimea. These are troops that are fully funded by grants and donations. In Title One schools, we try and make it affordable for girls by fully funding their Girl Scout experience because we don't want the reason that they're not in Girl Scouts to be because of family finances. So those two troops in Waimea are fully funded. So all their activities, uniforms, et cetera, are paid for. So the families don't have to, to pay for that. In other areas, we also have girls in Title One schools, but they're in traditional troops. So we give financial aid to those girls. On the next slide, you'll see that our four pillars of what our Girl Scout experience is about STEM, outdoors, life skills and entrepreneurship. On the next slide, and all of the pictures you're seeing are girls on, on the island of Hawaii. STEM is extremely important to Girl Scouts, science, technology, engineering and math because we're ranked, Hawaii is ranked forty-seventh in the nation for STEM majors per one hundred thousand residents. So we're one of the lowest in the nation. And girls are at the bottom of that. And so we really are working hard to make sure young girls have STEM experiences from kindergarten up to twelfth grade. We, we focus very heavily on those programs, especially in the Title One schools where they're not getting necessarily the type of programming that we have because we have national partnerships and start even cybersecurity in kindergarten nowadays. So we have national partnerships with Palo Alto Networks, NASA, SETI, Raytheon and others. On the next slide, our next one is outdoors and outdoors. And that's where Camp Kilohana certainly comes into play. Outdoor leadership development is extremely important. It develops a lot of confidence and a lot of teamwork. And it's something that we feel very strongly about that we need to keep the girls outdoors. We're right in the middle of our state parks program right now. And we'll be doing a lot of different programs within the guidelines that we can with the COVID safety guidelines. On the next slide, you'll see our focus on life skills. And life skills is where the girls not only learn about the importance of getting back to their communities, but also learning how to advocate for themselves and for others. That's a very big, important part of their life skill development. And on the next slide, entrepreneurship. For many of you, you know it as our cookie program. It's actually a financial literacy and entrepreneurship program. And it actually funds all of their community service projects as well as many of their programs throughout the year. Now, one of the things I'm really most proud of this year is that within seven days of the governor shutting down the state last year for COVID, we actually launched Girl Scouts of Hawaii at Home. We did programming five days a week, two hours a day, all the way from March, all the way through summer into the fall. Over seven hundred and fifty virtual programs. We shipped out activity kits for the girls because all of these programs were hands-on activities. And they became so popular, we actually had girls from forty-one states and eleven international countries sign into Hawaii's programming. So that was our way of really helping the families out through a time when even some of the schools weren't providing programming through the summer. On the next slide, we want to say a big mahalo to our Pohakula volunteers who have really been there to help support us over the past few years. Camp Kilohana has a lot of challenges for such a small camp and hasn't had a lot of funding available for it. So we really thank those volunteers who've come in and helped us. On the next slide, we'll see that one of the challenges we have is when we do get funding, it has to go to things like wastewater treatment facility, which we spent over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that at Camp Kilohana with the state support and other support. So our, our program, our funds that come in don't always go for what we would like it to go for. And we have to do things like the EPA mandated this. On the next slide, we want to say a special thank you to the Big Island firefighters because without you, the camp would be gone as of today. They really worked valiantly to help preserve the camp as much as possible. And on the next couple of slides we can go through, you can see some of the damage. We were very fortunate, the structures weren't burned down, they were scorched and the ground was scorched and some of the roofs were impacted. But overall, we fared very well with the very, very hard work of the firefighters. And we want to say a huge mahalo to them because it, it could have been just the end of Camp Kilohana otherwise. On the next slide, it shows some of the ongoing projects that we're looking for volunteer support for. Mike Donnelly is very well aware of some of the projects that we're always trying to reach out into the community to find out if we can get support for, for, you know, handyman and carpentry work and things like that. On the next slide, you can see some of the other things, but one of our biggest challenges, that Pohakula Lodge right there, it, we have an opportunity for some major work by the Department of Defense Innovative Readiness Training Team to come in in two thousand twenty-three. But we have to have that roof tested for asbestos. And as if it does test positive, the abatement will cost us over forty-five thousand dollars. And we have to do that work before they can do any work in there. So we, we do have our challenges on, on some of the projects at the camp. On the next slide, we should kind of show you some of the, some of the many opportunities for volunteers and community support at the camp. It is an old camp. It hasn't had a lot of, you know, opportunity to, to upgrade things there. But now with this opportunity in two thousand twenty-three to be selected by the DOD Innovative Readiness Training Team. For those of you who aren't aware of that, they are, it's a major construction program where they volunteer and actually donate their, their construction work for you. They bring in their equipment and well as the labor and for ninety days and can really make some major improvements. But we also have to be prepared. They actually helped us on this island, on Oahu, building a STEM Center for Excellence at Camp Pomalu and eleven thousand square foot facility, which is a pretty impressive facility. And the one thing we're excited about, the girls from the Big Island will be able to come over to that because we have a family foundation locally that is funding flying in girls from the other islands when it's safe to do so, to be able to come to programming at the new STEM facility. So we're really excited about that opportunity. I noted our volunteer contact, our island coordinator, Marcy Minker, is located on, on the island. And she is available if you have any groups or companies or organizations looking to do volunteer work. She can certainly help coordinate everything with you for Camp Kilohana. So we can bring that back into something that the community can be proud of and that more people can take advantage of in the community. Because it is an important opportunity for outdoor, you know, just outdoor activities and leadership development for young kids as well as for other organizations wanting to come through. So we want to thank you very much for the opportunity to, to talk to you this evening. And if anyone has any questions, be more than happy to help you and, or to answer those. And thank you again for all your support. And thank you, Pohakula volunteers. And thank you to our firefighters for the amazing work you've helped us with this year.
Thank you, Sherry. Appreciate that update there and hearing about Camp Kilohana and how the Girl Scouts here on the Big Island and across the state could really use the support of the community. Camp Kilohana really is a unique location, experienced location for our keiki. So mahalo for joining us this evening and spending some time with us here. And, you know, as part of this outreach and spotlighting, Girl Scouts of Hawaii is our nonprofit for September, for WCA's nonprofit of September. Donations can be made directly to Girl Scouts of Hawaii. As you saw there, you can also reach out to Marcy Minker for more information about helping out at Camp Kilohana. We have also established a donation button on the front page of the Waimea Community Association website. We will be maintaining this button and this method of donating towards this cause for the month of September. So these targeted donations collected during this month will be bundled and transferred to the Girl Scouts of Hawaii for the purpose of improving and caring for Camp Kilohana. So we are grateful for any generosity during this time the community is willing to provide to go to this effort for our children and for Camp Kilohana. Thanks again, Sherry. Appreciate you joining us on the call this evening. Mahalo.
Very much. Aloha.
I just have a couple of quick announcements here on the community side of things before we jump into our last presenter this evening. And I do appreciate everyone's patience here as we go through a number of these different things, some big topics to talk about and a lot of ongoing changes here. The first one I wanted to share with you all is just a quick update about Annunciation Community Food Pantry. Just some time, times for you to be aware of. This is our distribution days here at our Annunciation Catholic Church here in Waimea. Distribution days and those times are on, on the second and fourth Tuesdays of every month. Be, be conscious of bringing your mask, wearing your masks. And when you go to the distribution events, the, if you're looking to support this cause in any way, you can reach out to Miley Lincoln, her number's there on the bottom of the image. And you can also reach out to her for more information if you have any questions. But donations are also welcome. And I encourage you to reach out if you have any questions there. So thank you. The next one I have here is kind of an unfortunate turn of event. As many of you might be aware, unfortunately, due to, let's see, impacts of COVID nineteen in our community, the Waimea Town Market located at Parker School will be halting operations for the time being. So please stay up to date with any future changes. And they do have a website, Waimea Town Market. But just so you're aware, that is currently closed during this time. And lastly, I'll have to switch over to a different one here. And this is really about kind of an ongoing thing we're experiencing here. And this is due to really the changes at the federal level that are impacting us here at a, at a local level. And let me put this up here. So there are two different slides here. This one is, this first one is for landlords. And, and then the second one is for tenants. But, you know, this past month, the Supreme Court, US Supreme Court ruled an end to the eviction moratorium. And mediation is now required to help landlords and tenants resolve any issues under Hawaii Act fifty-seven. So if you're needing any sort of guidance or support, I encourage you to please reach out and contact West Y Mediation Center or the East Y Mediation Center, that's Kuikahi Mediation Center, for any assistance that you might need there. So you're welcome to pause those and get the information. That's on the bottom there if you need to look up those and you're looking for some support during this time. Well, thank you for letting me take just a moment there to update you on a couple of things that impact the community. If there are any, any sort of other announcements that you as community members would like to share, either in this forum or across our social media platforms, please don't hesitate to reach out to us. We'll be happy to help you with those and connect with the community during this time. All right. And so without further ado, and for our final portion of this evening, I appreciate your patience there, Lieutenant Colonel. We're grateful to be joined by the new Garrison Commander for Pohakula Training Area, Lieutenant Colonel Kevin Cronin. And before arriving to PTA, Lieutenant Colonel Cronin served at the NATO Special Operations Headquarters in Belgium as the Director of the Operations and Coordinator Center there. Now, he was also commissioned as an infantry officer in the US Army upon graduation from the United States Military Academy in two thousand and three. And in two thousand and eight, following graduation from the Special Forces Qualification Course at Fort Bragg in North Carolina, he was assigned as a Special Forces Officer. And during his years in the military, he has served in a variety of assignments ranging from tactical to strategic, including four deployments to Afghanistan, two deployments to Iraq, two deployments to Qatar, Syria, Lebanon and Jordan. So we're grateful to spend some time this evening to hear from Lieutenant Colonel to learn about his role and information about the Pohakula Training Area. And after which, we will pose a couple and a few community questions to him. So at this time, I would like to welcome on Lieutenant Colonel Kevin Cronin. Welcome.
Aloha, James. Thank you. Thank you so much. And appreciate that introduction. Thanks to you and, and the Waimea Community Association for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. First off, before I kind of dive into, into the, into the meat of my remarks, I just want to say thanks to to all the presenters who presented this evening. It's an incredible cross-section of what makes a community special. And, you know, my, my family and I love living in this community. And the presenters here are, are emblematic of, of the reason why. So the Community Association hosting this venue for opportunities to share information, our law enforcement professionals, our medical professionals, Dr. Hammer, thank you so much for everything you're doing during this pandemic. Sherry Chang and the Girl Scouts, you know, and the volunteers, our local representatives, and Battalion Chief Bill Bergen, you know, first responders. It's, it's, it's really special to be part of this community. And then, you know, kind of segueing into And then, you know, kind of segueing into the fires that Battalion Chief Bergen, you know, discussed. I was I was incredibly proud and inspired for what my team did, the small, small role that we did to fight those those fires as part of the overall community effort, which was really comprehensive and and demonstrated how, you know, we get through these crises together. We're a team of teams here on this island and, you know, everything we do needs to be a team effort and together. And, you know, I was proud of the role that that my team played in that effort, but I was really inspired and proud at how the community, particularly the Waimea community responded. The first responders led by Battalion Chief Bill Bergen, obviously incredible bravery and in fighting these unprecedented fires, but also the community and how they came together to support each other and the various volunteers. I know I'm gonna, you know, miss miss a couple of people here. I'm sorry for that, but some people that I've heard about that I've heard highlighted here in forums like this, you know, you inspire me. I'm proud to to live amongst you and I learned from you as well during during this crisis. So Bill Bergen, obviously Rhonda Bell, Melissa Samura, Nancy Carr Smith, Mike and Tricia Hudson, Alex and Tonya Cowell, Senator Noe, Councilman Tim Richards and his sharing of information. You know, thank you for for coming together and, you know, really demonstrating what what a community means. So so thanks for that. For the introduction, my wife and I arrived here in late April. My wife was thirty-six weeks pregnant when we when we traveled and and I came from from Belgium and my wife was, she's a professional as well. She's a Foreign Service Officer with the US Department of State. And she was serving as a economic officer at the embassy in the Hague in the Netherlands. Shortly after we arrived, we welcomed a new family member, baby daughter Anna, who's now four months old, but was born May third at North Hawaii Community Hospital. And so she's she's here chattering away and she's she's a future Girl Scout. So, you know, we're just happy to to have her growing up here on the islands. I look forward to your question and answer. I really, I want to see the the majority of my time here was left, but I just want to highlight a couple, a couple of key things first. So so our so our mission here at Pohakalua. We provide combat readiness to our nation's army and the broader military and Department of Defense through the training that we're able to host at Pohakalua Training Area. And the training that Pohakalua can host is can't be can't be replicated anywhere else in the state of Hawaii and anywhere else in in the Pacific Basin. You'd have to go to the to the mainland to to do this type of training or you'd have to go to allied nations like Korea or Australia. So it's really important to to the the key component of of what the militaries do when they're not, you know, in combat, which is training to prepare for combat. So we provide combat readiness. And when I got the call in Belgium that I've been selected by the the Army to command this training area, I was I was incredibly honored and humbled because training our nation's men and women to be prepared for when they're called into harm's way is a sacred obligation for me. Short of leading them in combat, the next highest responsibility is ensuring they're as ready as possible. So when they're called into combat, they can fight and win with distinction and return home to their families. And that's what we do at Pohakalua. It's the the conditions that we can, that that the soldiers can train on here closely replicates the conditions that they'll find in combat. And that's the gold standard for training. All military leaders, when they plan and conduct training, they want to get that training as close as possible to the conditions of combat. So those soldiers are ready when they find themselves in combat. So so that's the that's the that's our mission, providing combat readiness. But a key a key part of that mission is doing that while being intricately tied to our community. Because the community is where we 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 work, where we live, where our families are from, and in whose name that we ultimately serve and fight. And so community, staying closely tied to the community is incredibly important to me. So with our workforce, we have about two hundred thirty community members who work at PTA. And they're they're, you know, they 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 support that training mission through a variety of functions. And those 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 many, many of those team members volunteered in these recent fires to to help help do what they could to fight those fires. And then the last component that kind of supports our training mission is community. And what we do with the community is, I'll highlight a I'll highlight a couple of things is our our first responders, our fire department is the first responders on Daniel K and Noe Highway from mile twelve marker towards Hilo, all the way to the T intersection of Mama Lohoa Highway and then from the summit of Mauna Kea to the summit of Mauna Loa. And we'll respond to emergencies in that area, about five hundred square miles. And so we can get there because of our location in the saddle region, we can get there faster. And that that increases the the light in crisis situations and increases the likelihood of survival when advanced medical support can can get to an emergency. And then it frees up bandwidth for other first responders and law enforcement personnel to focus in their population centers where they serve. We also partner with a variety of community organizations and we'll have soldiers who are at Pohakalua Training volunteer to go participate in those community organizations, give back and learn a little bit about Hawaii Island. And and the Girl Scouts is a perfect example of that in Camp Kilauna. Participate in parades and events and projects. So for Waimea specific, the playground kind of in the in the beginning of the front end of town across the street from Parker School, that 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 was a project from soldiers in the Pohakalua team to demolish the the previous playground and haul it away. So the new playground could be placed there. And then we also, if we have any spare food, after soldiers come and train, we do everything we can to donate that to the community. So we've given that to a variety of outlets in Waimea and throughout the island. And thus far in the year, it's about sixty-five hundred pounds. Before I turn it over to the question and answers, I'll I'll just like to highlight. We are going through a land retention process for Pohakalua right now for one of one of the parcels that Pohakalua is located on. It's it's a twenty-four thousand acre parcel that's leased from the state. And that lease expires in twenty twenty-nine, twenty twenty-nine. And we've initiated the process to retain that land. It's a it's a long process and and we're about a third of the way in. And and a draft environmental impact statement is being prepared right now. This is one of the key components of of a land retention process. And the next big milestone will be in spring of two thousand twenty-two when that draft environmental impact statement is is released to the public for a public comment period of sixty days. And I just want to, I'll keep on, I'll say this as many times as I can. We welcome the public's comment and feedback during those periods. And and I I just ask you to consider, you and your organizations to consider commenting and then we'll continue to communicate those timelines as they come up. So with that, James, that kind of closes my overview and and I look forward to your questions and answers and questions. Thank you.
Mahalo, Lieutenant Colonel. Appreciate your time here this evening, as I said before, and grateful for your patience, of course, as we're here towards the end of the evening and really want to take some community questions. So I'm going to welcome back in Mary Beth and Riley to share a lot of these questions that were submitted ahead of time. And then we'll also try and intersperse some of the questions that come from the live feed. So Riley, Mary Beth, the floor is yours. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, James. I'll start off. So Lieutenant Colonel Cronin, thank you very much for coming to our community, being part of it. We appreciate your grasp of the Hawaiian language. Some folks, when they come from the mainland, have a hard time with words like Mama Lohoa and Mauna Loa and Mauna Kea. So we appreciate your efforts to respect the host culture. First question, and this is actually texted in from Bill Bergen. He wondered if there might be an opportunity for the military to partner with Parker Ranch to replace some of the grazing lands of property that the military owns and controls at Kiamuku to not only reduce the fuel load, but also provide them with alternative grazing sites. Is that something that Pohakalua might be willing to discuss with Parker Ranch?
Riley, thank you so much. And yep, I'm I'm extremely cognizant of my pronunciation of the words and I'm working hard at it. And when I get it wrong, I'm blaming it on my Eastern accent where I grew up. But in suburban New York City. Just a great question. Thank you, Battalion Chief Bergen, for it. So I am very focused on the fuel load in the Kiamuku and looking at opportunities to reduce that fuel load. I I, you know, the fires proved it's a risk and I want to do everything that I can to, you know, play play the part in the overall community effort to reduce our fuel load risk. And so what we're looking at doing is adding and improving to the fire breaks that are that are already there in the Kiamuku and that that we created during the fire. Where, and then another thing is agricultural grazing. And I'm engaged with with the Army lawyers and US Army Corps of Engineers to implement agricultural grazing in the Kiamuku as quickly as possible.
Very much, Mary Beth.
All right. Thank you, Lieutenant. Thank you, Lieutenant Colonel. Our next question sort of follows off your your last comments in in your prepared statement. What is, you you ran through the process for the Army to renew the lease, the EIS, the community outreach, the public comment negotiation. Who are the decision makers that are behind that process? And how long do you estimate that it will take?
Thank you so much for that question. It's a long process. And like I said, we're about a third of the way through and and the decision makers are above my level. And but when the environmental impact statement is complete, it'll go to the state DLNR Board for review and then also to senior Army and Department of Defense leadership for their review and action as well. And 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 I think we're looking at two to three more years for that.
All right, Lieutenant Colonel, I'll tag on to the next question. Would the US Army be willing to consider non-cash community benefits as part of the compensation package for the use of state lands? Whether it might be development of natural resources that could benefit your neighbors in the Pohakalua area? Maybe water development or other things like that? Is that potentially on the table?
Well, we're always looking at ways where we can partner with the community in a variety of different aspects. So when those things come up, we definitely investigate it and do 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 what we can. As far as those types of activities with the land retention pro process, I I can't comment on that. The process that we're following now is the environmental impact statement process and we need to see that through. It's very important to follow the process, but separate from that, if we have opportunities to to partner and benefit the community, I will explore that to the fullest extent possible.
All right. Thank you very much, Mary Beth.
Thank you. What is your annual operating budget and what is your current capital improvement project budget for things like buildings and et cetera?
So the annual operating budget is is just short of fifteen million dollars a year. And that doesn't include things like civilian pay and and in those types of compensation as to run the projects and the the various functions that we have at Pohakalua to support the training mission. For the capital improvement projects, right now we have major projects that are just short of of thirty million dollars over multi multi years. And I I just, I'd like to highlight that the contractors supporting those projects are all from the state of Hawaii. And the subcontractors for those projects, north north of eighty percent of them are from Hawaii Island. And that's that's really important to us. And then those those project, the projects and the and the costs will fluctuate annually based on timing and infrastructure needs and competition with other requirements throughout the the military.
Mahalo, Riley.
All right. Thank you, Mary Beth. Lieutenant Colonel, next question. Can you just comment on the staffing at Pohakalua Training Area, including military as well as civilian? And comment on your best guesses to how many may live in east way versus how many may live in west way?
So we're 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 about two hundred thirty team members at Pohakalua. And that's that's uniformed military, Department of the Army civilians and contract contractors. And so for the military perspective, there's only four military personnel who serve at Pohakalua on a permanent part of basis. That's myself, Command Sergeant Major Will Gray. We have a Hawaii Army National Guard Liaison Officer and a Marine Liaison Officer because the Marines make up about fifty percent of our training throughput at Pohakalua, really demonstrative of the fact that we're not just an army training area, we're a Department of Defense training area. So and and for the the disposition of where those team members live on the island, they live throughout the island. They live on the east side, Hilo, volcano. They live on the west side in Kona. They live in Waikoloa Village. They live in Waimea. And we're we're all over.
Thank you very much, Mary Beth.
Right. So again, you mentioned earlier some of the work that the your facility does in the community and have given us some really nice examples of under projects that the PTA has undertaken. Are there any restrictions or criteria to qualify for a community service project?
I can't give you specifics, specific restrictions, but what I will say is we we are receptive to to any and all ideas and we will field them and consider them and run them through the legal processes for for that consideration and look for those opportunities to give give back to the community. So it'll be, I think the biggest consideration is, you know, you know, support, support to the community and like in an outreach type manner where the soldiers and Marines also achieve a benefit as well.
Right. Next question, Lieutenant Colonel. I know that the military has a high priority on taking care of the natural resources. Can you just comment on what your involvement and engagement on protecting cultural, biological resources as well as when your troop carriers land at Kauai High and how you take care of the near shore waters when you are deploying and moving equipment around? Thank you.
Riley, thank you. And thank you to the community member for the opportunity to highlight that. We take our stewardship of the Ina very, very seriously. And we have very robust environmental programs, both cultural and natural to to do that. It's a team, the environmental team is about thirty thirty people with cooperators from academic institutions that are experts in their field. And they they lead that effort for the team at Pohakalua, which we're stewards for twenty-five threatened and endangered species, nineteen plant and and six animal. And some of those plant species are only found in the world at Pohakalua. And the fire is a good example of the great work that the environmental team does to protect those in in advance and to to prepare for an extremist situation like a fire to protect those threatened and endangered species. So the Pooh at the northernmost edge of of the Kiamuku maneuver, what we threatened and endangered species. So the, the poo at the northernmost edge of, of the Kaemuku maneuver, what we call the Kaemuku maneuver area at the triangle between, um, Mama Lohua Highway and Old Saddle Road. Uh, that poo that I know you all recognize, that wasn't burned by the fire. And it was due be- because of the incredible bravery of the firefighters and the first responders, but also because the environmental team had done preparatory work in advance to create, uh, reduce the fuel loads around those poos and, um, create fire breaks because there's, uh, many threatened and endangered species located there. And that little dark spot that you see in the poo, um, in the, in the middle of the poo is actually, um, a reforestation effort from our environmental team to, uh, remove all the invasive species, the fountain grass and plant native Hawaiian, um, uh, grasses. And for Kauai High Harbor, we're very cognizant of, of that. And, um, the ship operators uh, follow all Department of Transportation rules and regulations and we stay in the same lanes as everyone else. And, and the operators are, are, uh, are really good at what they do. And then when we offload the vehicles, um, we have, uh, they have a requirement to, to wash themselves at their port of departation. And then when they arrive at the harbor, we also wash them to, to prevent, uh, transfer of invasive species.
All right. Thank you very much. So I'm gonna ask you the sixty-four thousand dollar question. So what is the name of that poo at the base of Old Saddle Road and Highway one ninety?
So this, this shore is Poo Noho, Noho. Um, long is, uh, Poo Noho Noai.
Okay. Very good. Parker Ranch Cowboys used to call it No No Hi. So I, I like your pronouncing better.
No No Hi. Thanks Riley.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mary Beth, uh, James, do we have time for more?
Okay, Mary Beth.
Following up on those environmental questions, we have a couple of questions specific to water. So where does the water come from? Where do you get the water for PTA? Are there any water development opportunities within the training area? And then additionally, um, what is your wastewater disposal process?
So the water, uh, that we use at, at, uh, PTA is, is trucked in. Um, and so it's some of the most expensive water in, in the entire Department of Defense. And those, um, those, uh, those tanks that you can see from the highway that, that the water is, is placed in those tanks and and it's gravity fed into the, into the contuminal area in PTA proper. Um, we, uh, we, uh, have a cooperative agreement with, um, uh, University of Hawaii and, and Dr. Don Thomas to investigate, uh, water resources, um, within Pau Kaloa and to see if those can be of, of any use to both Pau Kaloa and obviously the greater community. And this is a great example of how the army cooperates with academia to, uh, look for opportunities and to innovate and to, to move forward together and, and continuously improve. And what Dr. Thomas is doing in the field of hydrology and geology is, is really incredible. And we're excited about his work, but he's, uh, he's following his, his, uh, his process. For the wastewater piece, um, the wastewater is removed. Um, we have, you know, contract with Hawaii John to, to remove that wastewater. And then we also, through our environmental program, robust, uh, inspections and inspection periods to make sure that, um, the, uh, the Ina is, uh, is not affected.
All right. Uh, my last question, Lieutenant Colonel, um, you know, when you have challenges, you always wanna make sure that you learn from those and figure out the opportunities of how to be better prepared to address them in the future. I understand that there could have been better preparation as far as some of the uh, PTA firefighting equipment and their capability of being out on the job and able to contribute. Also maybe some of the, um, pre-arranged, uh, memorandums of agreement and understanding with, uh, private contractors and others so that when the decision is made to go, then the tree is there and established that. So what, what are you doing to learn from this experience and improve on, uh, response the next time?
Oh, thanks. Thanks Riley. And as professionals, I think it's incumbent on us to always look for opportunities to improve and, and learn from our experiences and continuously get better. So with this fire was, was no different. And we, um, we definitely, you know, learn, learn some lessons so we can get better for the next fire. And I think as a planning consideration, we should, we should expect another fire, um, and, uh, do everything we can to prepare towards that end. So we, uh, Pau Kaloa conducted in, in internal, uh, AAR in the mil- that's what we, in the military we call, which is after action review. And identified all the lessons where we can, uh, take opportunities to improve. And the other, um, thing we did is we participated in the overall, uh, firefighting effort, um, AR and provided feedback in that forum as well.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I'm good, James. Uh, Mary Beth?
Do we have time for one last question, James? All right. My last question is, um, again, a combination of, of being, uh, good neighbors. So if people have questions or concerns about either airplane noise or, um, the traffic that's coming up and down, you know, Kauai High Road or Waikoloa Road, what is being done to kind of mitigate that traffic aspect once, when, um, training troops come? One. And two, if there are questions or complaints or concerns, who can residents reach out to?
Thank you for that, for that question too. We, everything we do to support our training mission, we, we're cognizant of the, of the effects it has on the community. And we do what we can to, to minimize those effects. So for the first part of your question with the, with the air, um, the, uh, they're supposed to be, they're, they're supposed to fly at an elevation. So it's not as disruptive to the population. So what I would ask the community to do is when they see an aircraft and they think it's flying too low to, uh, uh, note the location, the description, the time and share that with myself or, uh, our Public Affairs Officer, who I know you know, you all know well, uh, Mike Donnelly. And then we will, we will look into that and we will address that with, with the crews and with the units. Um, and if you can, take a picture. Uh, for the, the vehicles, what we do is when there's training movements from the harbors to Pau Kaloa, we, uh, Mike will send out those notices so the community can be aware in advance. And then we also train the, uh, the operators of those vehicles to, uh, be con- cognizant of their effect on the community and to do, uh, pull over drills, um, when they can. They pull over the side of the road, um, and let, let traffic, let traffic pass. Um, and uh, you know, it's unfortunate, we, we have to get our equipment up to Pau Kaloa, but we always endeavor to, um, to, to minimize the impacts on the community. And so I really appreciate all the patience. And if there's issues, please share those and we'll do what we can to, to address, address those. You can share them with, uh, Mike or please come, come directly to myself.
All right. Well, thank you, Lieutenant Colonel. And actually, Mike, Mike Donnelly has a question in the chat here. He's wondering about, uh, the next Experience, uh, PTA Open House, if, uh, if any plans for that.
Yeah. So, yeah. So this is a, uh, from everything that I've heard is, is a fantastic event where, where we could bring, uh, the community and in particular, uh, schoolchildren and, and their, uh, their teachers to, to Pau Kaloa to experience a little bit of what we do up there. And so we do that every year on Earth Day in April. But since it's such a fantastic event and we wanna, you know, improve or increase our connection with the community, we're looking to do it twice a year. So we're, we have a mark on the calendar of October twenty-eighth for the other, um, uh, the second Experience Pau Kaloa, uh, event, but, uh, we're, we're extremely cognizant of the COVID situation and we're analyzing that. Now, I really wanna do it, but we won't, um, we won't, uh, we won't do it if the COVID situation remains the same and doesn't get, get better significantly. So we're analyzing it and we're gonna, we're gonna do what we can.
Thank you, Lieutenant Colonel. And I apologize if we weren't able to get to everyone's questions, but I, I do encourage you to reach out directly to Lieutenant Colonel and, uh, the, the Public Affairs Officer, uh, Michael Donnelly, if you have particular questions about Pau Kaloa Training Area. Um, really grateful for your time, Lieutenant Colonel. Thank you for joining us this evening. And of course, thank you to, uh, Riley and Mary Beth for posing these community questions. Really gives us some good insight into Pau Kaloa Training Area and some of the happenings there and really the interaction with our communities around the island. So mahalo.
Thank you so much, James. And, and, uh, please say hi if you see me and my family around the neighborhood. I look forward to meeting you all in person.
Thank you so much, Lieutenant Colonel. It's really good to meet you and welcome to the Big Island. Welcome to Waimea. And of course, our, our lovely place here. So thank you so much. Um, well, before we close tonight's meeting, I wanna thank everyone for their patience, all of our, all our speakers this evening that joined us for tonight's call. Uh, just gonna say a couple of words here. So mahalo newly to all of our presenters for joining us, for taking the time to update our viewers and helping to lead our community during this time. And of course, thank you to all of our viewers for joining us on the live stream this evening. Once again, you are welcome to revisit and re-watch this recording up on the WCA Facebook page or up on our YouTube channel, which will be up, uh, this weekend at some point. So on behalf of the Waimea Community Association Board, I wish you could help, especially with this Labor Day weekend. Uh, be well. Aloha.